I didn't, I don't know, I didn't tell them to be here. Debbie, what you doing there?
Just texting, personal stuff.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, let's, let's go ahead and call a meeting to order.
Hello? Attention please.
Attention on deck, thank you.
All yours.
We adjourned. Any minutes of reports filed?
No.
Okay. We already did our events and meetings, but what do you got, Mr. Jeff?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Fly with it.
Okay, we're done. Unfinished business, long-term planning discussion. We gotta get some priorities and we gotta figure out what we think can work and what's just... So... How was the St. Mary's trip?
I did not make it, so you'd have to ask the ones that did. I've been there twice and I had to work my other job, so anyway. Anybody that was there that...
I was there.
Comments?
And it looks like a workable situation. Office space adjusted by five to suit...
Are you talking about ten aisles or the whole thing?
The, the, all of the aisles.
The MOB, the medical office building.
So when you're saying workable, you're talking about just the health department or everything? Because I mean, there's a couple of different options out there.
There's a floor plan there that would accommodate many different references.
They also have a development agreement, which y'all may know, with the farmer holding companies already on all the property.
Yeah.
I heard something about it, but don't know the details.
Yeah, we were aware of that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree, I think it's got a great location, parking's obviously great. That's subject to change though, because they said that depending on what they decide to do and how much parking is part of the deal. The biggest drawback to my, in my opinion, is the fact, I think health could just move in today. Everybody else, it's a massive undertaking to, basically you have to go back to the walls on the floors that are, that are not the health department. Because there's like, I don't know what, there's probably a hundred and fifty rooms in that place, I would imagine. And they could be taken out. I mean, you've got to sink in every room, and every room's about twenty square feet or something, you know? It's just, you know, it's a massive amount of rehab just to get back to square one. And that being said though, like I said, the location's great, and I think it would certainly serve the people very well to be able to... It's just pretty simply located, drive right there, get out, you know, park, there's no parking issues. They can come and do their business and, and without what we run into now. But we're, yeah, you've got elevators that go, you know, every floor. So it's got a lot of good stuff, but I think, I don't know, have any, any concept of what it costs to buy the building? Or whatever the arrangement would be, but to renovate it might be exceeding...
Have the farmers...
So I guess my question is, is why do you think all those offices would have to come out?
Well, I mean, this is typical layout, nobody has little offices. I mean, it's pretty much serving the public, everybody has pretty much wide open spaces for their employees.
So we have a lot of cubicles right now, which, I mean, the building is basically a, could be a shell. I mean, yeah, there's gonna have to be some, some modifications done, but a lot of those offices could still be used as offices.
I'm not saying they couldn't be, but I'm just saying there's, this is an exceedingly large number of little cubicles that really don't, wouldn't serve a purpose for us, I don't think.
Greg, you looked at the HVAC over there, what... What would we have to do with, with that?
Rough numbers. From what I've been talking to, some of the staff that was there, what we've looked at, the real top units are shot. There is the energy management ship, sitting in the shop in a couple of years. There's rough numbers, go through it, half made, roughly.
With that question you asked, is, is that question assuming a purchase of the building?
We're just trying to cover all bases, I mean, so if we bought the building, what, what would we have to put into it? You know, elevators, HVAC, you know?
If I assume if we leased, if it was a lease, I would assume that landlord would provide heating and cooling.
Right.
Unless, unless they could find a tenant that was willing to take on that cost also.
Yeah, I just, uh... I mean, we of course could do a lease, but I think you're looking at an astronomical number there. But I mean, back to Dale's point, yeah, it's gonna take some rearranging, but hopefully by having a building that you could basically go in and gut everything, we could make it work so that all offices could work a whole lot better together and be rearranged much better.
I think they said there was twelve or thirteen thousand square, square feet on each floor. So, I mean, we end up with thirty-five, forty thousand square feet. I don't see any reason that we couldn't consolidate, I mean, from a logistical point of view, everybody there. I mean, because we certainly don't have that square footage now. So it's, that's okay, I mean, I just don't know what, when we start talking about renovations, what kind of numbers you're talking about.
Yeah, we know there's gonna be a cost there. But, but for like health, there's a very minimal cost, because they could do some of that as, as is.
Yeah, I mean, finding that place, man, I don't think, I mean, it's gotta be exactly the way they would need it.
Either the first or the third floor, either one would be perfect.
It, it looks like it would be a good fit for health, I have, and it would be workable for other offices. But I can't say that I think I'm going beyond health, I think it might work well for health. But I don't know it would be a good idea for other offices to go there, even though they physically could. But I don't think it would be as attractive as, I don't think that would be a very attractive option. But work, this work will talk about this ways, but I don't think it's too receptive to...
To who?
Uh, to, to the rich. I think it's not as good an arrangement as we have here on campus. I think we'll be stepping down in quality of service, public perception.
I'd say quality of service should be as good or better. I mean, if, 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 you know, if we're doing our jobs, the quality of service shouldn't matter what building that we're in.
The, actually it does matter. Employees' work performance and satisfaction, I think is related to the quality of space and location. So I think, I think that would be it.
I think the public would appreciate having the ease of parking, being able to get run to the elevator to get to the office. I think the parking issue by itself might, I mean, that would be an improvement.
Anybody else out there, were you there?
I was there. I think, I make, I think Rob makes a good point, because I think, for instance, my staff would prefer to stay in the downtown area. They like being in the downtown core. A lot of advantages to that for my office, because we deal with the bank daily. It's easy for us to get to the bank and, you know, just walk there to do those things. Again, the space, I think a lot of it also, to me, would depend on what the cost would be. I don't think, other than the health department, that you could buy without getting all some other floors to make space available how it needs to be to accommodate, for instance, the collector's office and the assessor's office across the hall from there, something like that. I mean, it's kinda in three sections now, it's like the outs, two outside sections and then a center section. It is quite chopped up and... It really is, it was very, there were a couple of conference rooms, but there was very little large areas. The pharmacy was probably the biggest wide open space in the whole building. And it would still take a lot of work to make it, for instance, a usable space for the collector's office or something like that. To me, the bottom line would be the, what the cost would be, and I don't know how you could go about developing that and if you... I don't even, if they would even sell the building, if they have an agreement with a developer now to develop the whole complex. And I don't think the county wants to lease either, I would be in favor of that. Even though that's not my decision, I just don't think that's a good deal for the county.
Is, is the concept to, if, if, if the county were to go that way, is to, to take, keep court operations here? And everything else virtually would go? So if you had a floor that was assessor, collector, recorder? And a floor that was finance, auditor, purchasing, commission? Is that the kind of thing you're looking at, so it's one-stop shop for a big clerk, I forgot, sorry?
There's a rule clause.
So based on what you're coming for, you have one-stop shop per floor, basically? Is that, is that the idea that you're looking at?
Yeah, the idea would be to just get core-related county offices together that work closely together. Get the collector and assessor together, um, to get out of the Carnegie building. You know, lots, lots of objectives, just, just an idea. But, uh, anyway, it, uh... I mean, it's not in downtown, but, you know, land isn't cheap in downtown, and so, you know?
Land isn't available on that.
That's, there you go.
It's gotta be in the county seat, not certainly in the county's.
Yeah. That upper parking deck, Greg, how, how much maintenance?
I really never got a real good look at it.
I mean, is that gonna be something we're gonna...
I'd have to look at it again, take it, take it again, if there's rust coming in from pre-rod or what's, I'd just have to look. I don't know if it's a chip in or falling or anything, I just have to look.
Actually, at thirteen thousand square feet per floor, that's as much as two floors. I think this building is only about six thousand square feet per floor, so...
See, I've been looking at the plans, again, which they did before I came on, and, you know, it... I've been getting to like this more and more, where we are staying downtown and... But, uh, I had, Hal Dooley brought me this, which is the MSP plan, which right now is just kinda dormant. But, you know, they have a, a section that is for city, county, state offices. Where if we did wanna leave downtown, this is not that much farther, but it, it, there again, you could do a new building.
When would that ever happen, though?
I don't know. I, I, I asked Hal that and, and...
You're not even gonna get access to any of that land until we have a new governor, so... That would, in my opinion, is...
Well, I don't, no, I don't know if anything's gonna happen here before the election next year. I'd like to think we do something, um...
Well, that's, really, that to me, that's a big part of this issue, something needs to be done.
Yeah.
And if, and if we're not gonna move, something, we definitely need to get this building in shape, probably regardless. And that kinda puts us all in limbo if, if we don't, if the commission doesn't make a decision on, some type of decision on...
Well, I think we kinda need to narrow it down a little bit, I mean, you know, I, I initiated a look at the Baptist building, just mainly because they invited us to come over and look. And, you know, they're, they're vacating their top two floors. What'd he say, they got thirty-eight employees in a seven-story building, which is really ridiculous. You know, um, but, um, it, it's kind of a, it's such a weird building, but I mean, God, there's enough space there that... You could put everything, you could put every office we've got in that place. And again, you're right, you're right in the downtown campus, because you're right across the street from, uh, from the jail and, and all that, so... And I'm not saying, you know, we wanna, they, their decision right now is they're spending money, they've got a brand-new roof on it, they're putting in new, uh, copper plumbing and everything in it and, and all that, but, but again, it's, it's... That would more than meet our needs, I know at one time when they were gonna buy it and tear it down to put the jail there. But I just can't picture seven stories for thirty-eight employees.
Same to comment about the lack of real estate downtown. What to keep on the table, reflect on the table, that suggests that we recognize the real estate that we have right here where we are. What we're, what the county owns and the business parking right behind this, right behind this building, right behind the courthouse. It's a nice, large area that could become a construction site if we're willing to give up the parking. And I think that's, so we would have to find another parking elsewhere, but if we did, we've got a great construction site right here, right here, next door to us. And I think there are possibilities for, and I think it is possible to find other parking that would free up that construction site. One, one possibility for another apartment to replace what we would lose would be for the county and city to do a joint project with this parking structure right across the street, on the south side of High Street, behind the buildings. And that's a large area there that they're parking, the area that the city already owns. City, city, county, project, joint project, parking structure there could replace the parking that we lose here. And the possibility the county could even own...
The parking, parking lots are very, parking structures are very, very expensive.
Money, uh, bonds make it possible and, and they, and they generate revenue. And it serves a lot of needs. And the city might be looking, it's possible, it's possible that the city someday would be building another parking structure downtown anyway. So if the city and county were agreed, definitely...
Well, there's plans for parking structures, uh, east of Madison, because, oh, years ago, they brought in some group from, from Boston who did a study, and, uh, their plans were, one, one was down Monroe on the other side of the alley. And then one was, uh, where the Capitol Theater is, and these people didn't even know who Sam Cooke was. And they said, well, let's tear that down, we'll build it there, and we said, that's Sam Cooke's building, he's not gonna tear it down. And I go, well, who's Sam Cooke? And I think we paid, the city paid him like thirty-eight thousand dollars and they left town and... But there, there's, there's, there's a couple of old plans for parking garages.
And there's an old plan, which, right here on the south side of High Street also, for a park, for a parking structure, and, and older one. And also that would allow, you could do a parking structure and have it pass through right onto High Street. So instead of walking in the back doors, we'd simply walk onto High Street, right across the street, into the county offices. I think it's worthy of, it ought to be looked at along with these other concepts.
You're quiet, Jeff.
I already said what I thought about it, maybe stay in this footprint. I don't think parking is as big a problem as everybody's making it, people are just lazy, walk. Of course, I get to park right there.
Well, again, talking to the Baptists, you know, they've got, again, since they don't have that many employees, they've got parking. I didn't realize we were, we were renting some parking spaces behind the Chamber of Commerce too, which is, which is not that far either, really.
Just when it's raining or snowing.
Is there no interest in Barbara Busher's properties at all then, or...
I, I don't know what we could do with it, I mean, you could make it parking. And I think, again, that goes back to Mark Elliner, I was talking to him, and he had just brought up that, that, that property would be something you would buy and just tear down and make surface parking for jury, you know? I know when we went and visited the public defenders, you know, they've got eleven employees and seven parking spaces. So you, you could, you could use it for parking, I don't think you could use it for additional building space. I think it's too far away from, from us.
It's about a block away, and she's got several public buildings, she said you can send a proposal, if you're interested or not, even if you wanted to.
I mean, it's no further than the Baptist building, really.
Yeah.
I mean, so if you wanna lease space there...
Going down the Baptist Building Hill down there, parking is no, is no bar, I'm mad. Don't know whether it'd go anywhere, but she said you could send a proposal, the properties you wanted, what you intended to do with them, and what you wanted to pay for them. That'd be a starting point.
I, I, I don't, I don't know what we would do with them right now, but...
She owns that entire block over across from the Christian Church, right?
That's her own block, I got that.
All the way to the...
Yeah, yeah.
Half that city block across East Capitol. She's been approached several times about purchasing buildings and she's been...
I think Old Town made a proposal and she...
She told me she was not interested in Old Town's proposal because it was all of her properties. She considers her, some of the property that she owns on the...
I had some, I heard last week that some, they have re-approached her on just buying some of them. And she's agreed to, in fact, she called them.
Yeah. That was her intention, if she wanted to sell some, she didn't want to sell all of them. So if you wanted to buy two or three just of the parking, that's a proposal you can send forth to her. Maybe on a commercial way, where we already park across the street from the city, we could maybe, you know, interested in those couple lots, tear it down, make our own parking for our jurors and stuff, but some of our own people. Somewhere along the line, you know, you have to initiate it, you have to put something together and send it there, start the negotiation.
I don't think it'd be bad to have it for parking, have our own parking, but...
Debbie, how much do we spend currently on parking? Eighteen or nineteen thousand to the city?
A year?
Using for parking, yeah, that'd be an idea.
Yeah.
As far as moving any buildings or anything.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda like Jeff, I really would like to keep everything here. I think this is where, you know...
I think we do have downtown options.
I mean, I think, so if you guys wanna be, keep it downtown, I'll stop talking to the farmers, because I mean, that sounds like that's a mute point.
Well, yes, for this stuff, but for the health department, I think that'd be a, a great place to put in that medical office building. I think that'd just be great for them, and they are out of room and need room.
What about the properties across from Goldsmith Cancer Center?
I'm gonna take Christie, Dr. Cameron owns one of those properties, and he came in the store a couple Saturdays ago. And he is now part of, he's one of Cap Region's...
Retired physicians?
Well, he worked, he works with, with Missouri Orthopedics now. And he basically, he said that building is so solid, he said, no earthquake, no tornado, it'll take it down. And they left it, it's got, he said, I got brand-new office furniture in there, everything, it's just kinda like he closed the door and left it. So Christie and I are, it's ten thousand square feet, which is really, it's a little bigger than what you've got, but it's not. Again, talking with Cap Region, behind the Goldsmith Cancer Center, going around that hill, they have a property there, they're renting to a not-for-profit for a dollar a year for storage. And I think as the new MOB is done, and they're, they're gonna consolidate more clinics, there's gonna be a lot of other medical buildings that would be set up for, you know, medical, you know, what, that, that might be, might be perfect. And, um, so, um... Just again, out of respect for Dr. Cameron, I, I said, I'll, I'll bring Christie over, we'll take a look. I don't know if, if that's enough additional space or not.
Right now we have about seventy-seven hundred square feet.
Yeah.
It require not a floor of the two feet, you're not gaining much with that.
Yeah, so it, I don't... Yeah.
Where's, where's their OB G, is they're moving over to the new building, one of the old APs?
Yeah, but see, that building they leased, the building they're in now, they leased. And they're, they're gonna hold on to it for the time being, I don't think, you know, that, that building's older than you think. I mean, that was the old A and P or, or not, it was the old, uh... Safeway, yeah, it's, it's, it's been everything, it's been, you know, motor, or Department of Revenue's motor vehicle, it's, um, but...
It's got parking?
It's got parking, it's got great parking, that would be good, I'm just wondering, you know, Community Health Service Center, um... When we had gone over and toured their thing, they were talking about they needed more space, and they, they actually had some money earmarked. And now I see where they've, they've let some of their people go, but if, you know, if they would move, that's a nice building too. I don't know, I'd...
Well, I mean, I can continue to talk to the farmer companies, but I can tell you, just from my perspective, I'm for moving out of downtown. So anything we do downtown, I'll vote no against. I mean, I will not vote to move health to the medical office building at St. Mary's, because unless we're gonna lease space there, I mean, there's no way that we can handle that big of a building for just health. We can take it somewhere else, but, I mean, I understand you guys like to be downtown, we've been downtown for a long time. People change, things change, we keep, we can't keep building in a box. I mean, we're out of space. I mean, we were lucky that we got the law enforcement center over here, but, um, you know, I wasn't here at, at that time. You know, it, it would be nice if we had a county campus, but we don't, we have people spread out all over the place. Got juveniles spread out, we got health spread out, we got public work spread out. It's, uh, I mean, yeah, the courthouse is here, and that's one thing that we can't move. I mean, we could build a new courthouse, but that would be an astronomical cost. But, uh, I mean, we could do a lot of things, but to do this project back here where the old jail was, was two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars a square foot. Tear it down, build it back, two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars a square foot. Any new construction's gonna be a hundred dollars a square foot, minimum. And that doesn't include the land. And it doesn't include parking. I mean, parking's gonna be probably that much or more. So, I mean, we, you know, we can continue, but, you know, we're gonna be divided up here, I'm afraid, so...
Chris, is there any, any opportunity with the library or anything like that, of getting their, any of their stuff?
I don't think we've explored that, I don't think we want it, I think they've got some issues over there, I don't think...
Well, what about the, the store across the street, you know, they're...
That's, that's owned by the Weldon family, um...
But they have, I mean, there's parking there, and it is, I don't know how big it is or anything like that, but, you know, it's, it's close by.
Well, the library leases all of that space now from the Weldon family, and...
They got the Carnegie building, do they intend to keep that also for their use?
No, no, I think they would probably let that go, well, they might keep the parking, but I think that's, part of it is, they would move some of their administrative offices from the old A and P over into the Carnegie building, and then move some of their, um, oh, computer things over into the Carnegie building.
Would they give up the lease on the A and P?
Possibly, I don't know, I haven't, that I have talked to Claudia, but I, I know they're paying a pretty, fairly high rent for that property right now. And, um, uh, they would like to have the Carnegie building back.
Chris, even though my, you know, my, my preference is to stay downtown, I, I still think, from my point of view, that whatever is the best option for the county, I'm, I'm in favor of. If that St. Mary's turned out to be a, a wonderful, you know, spectacular deal for the county, then, then I, I... deal for the county, then, then I, it would be hard for me to say, no, I don't wanna go there. No, I wouldn't support the commission's decision to, to move the office in there.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to have some kind of a price.
Yeah.
Maybe, um, that could, that could make our decision very quickly if, uh.
And certainly, we don't have a vote in that, but, you know, I mean, we appreciate you, uh, listening to our thoughts on the issue. But, uh, again, I, I think what, what's best for the county, we have to be cognizant of that. And, uh, I do agree with you that over time, everybody gets used to the changes that are made.
I would like to say that from, from my, from an IT perspective, which I know is the least of all these things, but I would rather everybody go together than to start splitting them up. I mean, I couldn't even stand them, get us hooked up to the Baptist building. I mean, we had to run fiber. We had to hook up to their internal infrastructure, all that, just to hook up two phones or whatever it is to the county. If we start, if we don't move everybody together where we can kinda forklift everything out and take it with us, then we're just adding complexity to, you know, points of failure along the way to keep everybody together. So.
Well, the Baptist building's not talking about selling the whole building anyway. And I, I don't think it make, would make a lot of sense to take the top two floors and.
And that's a real old building. I mean, hell.
Yeah, and, but it's, but it's, it, 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 yeah, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Just take two floors.
But that's why I like that building over there, because we could put everybody in it. I mean, that's the one solution that we talked about, that everybody could fit in.
But Mark Richardson might miss us then.
He's smiling.
I can see the pain in his eyes. Well, the one thing to consider, if you do the, 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 the core moving, so you've got adequate parking or services in, for instance, that, that building. And if you brought, and then if you brought the public defender over here and then with a floor set aside and another floor set aside for an additional court complex, it would have to be larger than this to meet their need, obviously, because you've got that in their architect's architectural plans, what their need is. That potentially would, would work?
It, it solves a lot of the issues. It solves space needs for health. It solves getting out of the Carnegie building, which is even previous commissions have said they wanna get out of the Carnegie building. And it, and it solves the needs for the courts, too. It, it, it would provide another courtroom over here, although it may not be exactly what they want, but it would give them some space and have adequate space for the public defender over here as well.
And if you could open up, I mean, most of these walls are, are non-supporting, aren't they? And if that's the case, and you could open it up, if, if the whole floor was available, you've got more court potential than you would have had before. That might be able to.
Right. And just so, yeah, and this is, I'm giving, Judge Beadham was in Saturday. And see, he thinks that we should keep the Carnegie building and we could move the commission offices over there and maybe, you know, and so I, I said, well, yeah, I will present it. But he thinks that's a great building and that we're not using, we're not using, you know, yeah.
Snacks, uh, enjoy the smell.
That we're not using it adequately.
I marvel at how great an old building it was fifty years ago.
Yeah. Yeah. But I'm just, I just, I, I told him I would, I would, but, but Judge Beadham did say that we're not using it to its potential. And, uh, so that's.
So you got any money?
So, I've never, what are the county's resources to pay for any of this, if I may?
We have two million set aside in reserves, basically.
Is that set aside for something like this?
That we could use, yeah, that we could use for something like this, yes.
Or we choose to use it for this.
It's not the capital improvements, sales tax, too.
Okay.
Fifteen percent of that half-cent sales tax.
And is it planned for the next version to set aside?
Basically, we had the two million setting aside for the old jail, but then when we got the plans to do it, how we need to do it to get as much space as possible, the price tag went up to, what, three and a half? And then it shot up real high. So that's why we're on long-term planning, so we can determine, do we need to start setting some money aside and do that or move off campus like, you know, Chris suggested?
But that two million came from the last half-cent sales tax or?
Reserves that we've built up in the general fund.
So it's not capital improvements?
But there could be some money there, too, for it, depending on what they do with the next five-year sales tax.
And what, it generates twenty-five million over the five years or seven?
That we owe it to fifteen percent of that.
That's our eighty-five, fifteen, eighty-five goes road and bridge, fifteen goes capital improvements of the twenty-five.
Well, that's, but isn't that how, that's by choice each time you redo it. You don't, you could say, well, we're only gonna put eighty to the roads and bridges and.
Yes, you're, you're correct.
You could say that. You can say that.
I don't think we've, should probably change the form.
No, I would leave it.
I, I, I don't think.
Well, I, I understand that, but I, I think the voters also have to realize that there is a need to do something with the county buildings rather than let them go down.
Well, I mean, that's where we need to look at the windows, you know, in the courthouse and the windows here and, and this, too. We're kinda like the Capitol where, you know, you let it crumble, you know, to where you finally have to do something.
Well, but keep in mind to that point, too, is that, you know, that's how we do a lot of the improvements that we are doing here is through that capital improvement sales tax. And so we have, what, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year?
Roughly a year, yes.
That, that we're able to use to do the HVAC at Pringer, to do the window replacement, to seal the courthouse. I mean, you know, if we didn't have that, we'd be in really bad shape.
Right. Since we are looking for a twenty-year plan, then the, uh, the best plan, come up with a concept of plan, but it may be, the plan has to be implemented over two or three or five years for, you know, to achieve that twenty-year plan. If, my point is, a twenty-year plan, that doesn't mean we have to implement it before the end of the year. The best plan may be implemented over a period of two or four years to attain that twenty-year, uh, company of twenty-year growth.
Well, and I, I don't think it's hard to look at a twenty-year plan. I mean, you know, we're only up here for four years. I mean, it would be nice if we could implement it or at least have some kind of a five-year plan that we're gonna try to achieve. And if it goes beyond that, that's fine. And those, those plans may change, they may tweak, but, you know, just to at least have some kind of a path as to what we're trying to, to get towards and.
Well, you know, some other things, though, is the fact that some of these options we've pointed out, they kinda have a shelf life. If, if we let the medical office building, or if we don't decide, it's just continuing to deteriorate. And I know Greg said how much mechanical repair is already needed. And if you let that slide for a year, two years, whatever, and, you know, if nothing happens, that's just gonna go downhill. Because, I mean, there, there's a big locked fence around that place and it is basically off limits. So it's, unless something happens, it's just gonna go down. And that, if we're looking at buying something, you, you put it off too long, then you're actually just adding cost to the, you know, to the problem by having to replace more and more stuff because the building is not being, you know, habitated. Uh, so that's, that's another thing I would like to bring up is some of these things you can't just put off three or four, five years down and say, oh, well, look at it then, you know, it might not be worth the effort at that point.
Well, and they have sold it, too. I mean, to me, the, even the MSP area, that would be a very attractive, um, idea for having people want to go down to that area and think it'll be nice, uh, very, very nice-looking area for people to wanna visit once, especially once they get the other development, you know, done there. But, and again, are they gonna do it? When are they gonna do something about it? And we'll be at loss the chance to buy this other place if, you know, if we wait and then nothing will happen with the MSP, then we'll kind of.
Well, I think we do need a price. We need, we need something from farmers and that could really help us make our decision, um, pretty quickly.
Or you guys can actually hire somebody, pick your top three ideas, give it to them, and let them come up with the price of what it would cost to do what you wanna do. Cause other than that, I don't know how, whether it's move us to St. Mary's, whether it's, um, you know, add out on this building, whether it's going to another place, you know, so we can get some idea money-wise. Us, we won't have, I don't think anybody in here's, has the expertise to figure that out. I mean, per square footage, you could probably guess, but.
Well, Chris, you were saying new construction's gonna be around a hundred versus the renovation was two eighty-five. So essentially, we could build a, I mean, I guess you could just, if you had, if you had a design and just say, okay, the design is this, you just had to find a place to park it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you could say a new construction would cost us X dollars versus some other options. And maybe that would lead us to find a place, you know, I don't know how big a place you'd need, how many acres. I, I would assume several acres to, you know, set a new building in, but.
You'd also, I count for what that, we'd probably be saving money on utilities and things like that because new, a new construction would be a lot more energy efficient. We could make it where it would be more energy efficient than what we have now.
And did I understand, Greg, that the, this has to physically be in the city limits?
Yes.
Can't just be in county?
No.
The seat.
We could go back to Marion. Didn't that where we started, Marion?
You probably get some pretty good.
Yeah.
A lot of arguing, too.
Floods a little bit, but we could, you know, fish when we're.
Same city.
There you go. Right on the very river.
We already own a lot.
There you go.
Parking lot. I mean, to me, money-wise, it'd be cheaper for all your money, you know, if you had a place to put it, build all the construction for what you wanted.
But we do have to maintain these buildings, too. So, I mean, we're still having to keep these structures up and running. We may get rid of a Carnegie, we may get rid of a health department, but if we get it twice as big as the building, then are we really saving in utilities? You know, I kinda doubt it. Even though it's more energy efficient, you're gonna have bigger building, you know.
Just don't heat it in the winter.
Oh.
Chris, your two eighty-five was the, doing that. Now, that wouldn't be a rehab of building that's in fairly good shape.
No, no, that was tearing down the old jail and rebuilding over there. That was, that was a rough number, so.
To get together like this, I'm talking about anything and everything, and that's what we need to do at this time. Whenever we reach the point that the commission makes the decision, I feel, I'm sure all of us will support the decision once it's made. But in, during these times, we, I think it's appropriate to talk about anything and everything about possibilities. But when the decision's made, I'm sure we'll all get behind and support.
Do you have more favor of building new than rehabbing an old one? This one's been rehabbed and the third one's our offices over here. Doesn't do us much.
It's only where we can control this thing.
You thought that was an idea?
I don't know.
You haven't found the microphones in your office either yet?
No.
But that's what you get when you start rehabbing buildings, you know, the heating and cooling system, you've got old windows, you find one.
Well, I agree with Ralph that we're here to get some information and try to put it all together. This isn't gonna happen tomorrow. I mean, I wish we had a magic wand and we could wave it and say, this is how the design would work and everybody would be happy. It's not gonna happen. Uh, even if, you know, Chris is on these fact-binding missions and stuff, if you find something off-campus, I don't think we should move, but if you find something that's gonna work, great and be best for the county. I wouldn't, you know, vote against it to hold it up.
At most cost efficient, I think.
Uh, I, you know, the Baptist building, it might have been beating your head against the wall, but you went and looked at it, it was an option. We can put that behind us.
Mm-hmm.
So I still think that the, the old jail, dealing with that space, we have that space. Maybe we, maybe we do keep the Carnegie building. That was one of my intentions before was getting rid of it, but we may regret that, not having that room later on. So I think we just need to keep meeting and keep throwing ideas out there and playing with it. And eventually we can come up with something. I think we need to start putting money aside every year for it. In five years, if we decide to do something and pull the trigger, then you got the money to work with. Cause two million is not gonna go very far. So.
Well, the costs are gonna go up every year that you don't do something, too. So.
Was the cost just to demolish the old jail? Was there just a cost associated with that?
Yeah, we can't just demolish it because we have the Sally Port that's underneath on the very bottom floor. So, um, um, so, I mean, you know, we could demolish the top three floors, but we still gotta somehow seal up the Sally Port somehow.
I was thinking of phases, you know?
Right.
If you cut something down, maybe go ahead and get it tore down and then you can plan on putting the building back up in the air.
So I'll continue to look at the St. Mary's MOB. We wanna look at what a new building would cost and do we wanna look at how many square feet we think we need to, to do it or, um, I mean, I, I guess I'm looking for, you know, the St. Mary's MOB is just one option. Let's have three or four options, but, I mean, I, I've thrown out that let's build a building over on Lincoln's campus, brand-new building. We could, we could partner with the health department and Lincoln's nursing program, and we could do something with Lincoln University and try to help, help Lincoln increase their enrollment.
Now, you're talking about just the health department?
No, I'm talking about everything.
Do they have space for?
I have not explored that. I mean, right now, I'm just throwing out options. I mean, you know, I mean, Lincoln's always talking about they wanna increase their enrollment. They're turning away nursing students. We've met with them at one time with the health department, community health center and, you know, trying to create some partnerships there. Um.
School district, we get some cheap land on Crook Hollow.
So, anyway, I mean, building a new building over here on Betty Bush's, I mean, you know, it's not that far. I mean, we keep this parking, you know, we, I don't know if that, that works for the health department. Um, but, uh, you know, for me, to try to get our offices that work closely together, together so that we can operate more efficiently is key to providing great service to Cole County residents. Um, you know, right now, we got a hodgepodge of people everywhere.
I'm not pitching if everybody was in the same place, you know, one set of elevators, one building to maintain, one grass, one place to blade snow. It's just, you know, just a non-maintenance career. They don't have to go all over the Jefferson.
I mean, ongoing costs are more. Sorry to interrupt, Steve, but, I mean, it's, uh, you know, as we look at the next sales tax cycle, yeah, we may only get fifteen percent, but the fifteen percent was twenty-five million over the last five years, roughly. Well, fifteen percent is gonna be thirty million or something over the next five years. So it's, it's gonna be a bigger, bigger number, but the costs of construction and everything else are going up, too. So, um.
Just for the cycle, stay down for it?
So, and then, you know, it's something that we could possibly finance, too.
Is the state, do they even use the property across from the health department now, the old armory?
Yeah. Yeah, that's MBE.
Oh, that's where all their stuff.
And they have some trading activities, too.
Off-preparational, building, building.
Yeah.
But there's lots of empty buildings all over the town. You can release, rent everything.
I might meet with Doug Nelson, too, even though I think, I don't think there's anything gonna be happening with MSP in the foreseeable future, but.
Two years.
Uh, they do have a plan for public space. Yeah.
It would be nice if we're still talking about this when MSP finally does get started.
Who, who controls that? Is that state controls there or what?
The governor.
Can you tell me what he?
Yeah, I would like to.
Personal model.
Come on over.
I think your needs are more easily addressed.
It's the, the, the three, the governor, the lieutenant governor, and the attorney general, I believe, control all state property in separate route.
Oh, that sounds great.
Uh, and at one time, there was, the deal was to turn it over to the MSP commission and, uh, at that time, it's my understanding that, that the lieutenant governor and the governor, this is when Matt Blunt was governor, were ready to sign the papers, but. were ready to sign the papers, but Nixon wouldn't. And that's why it never changed, or chose not to, and that's why it never changed hands to the redevelopment commission in order to move forward with plans on doing those things.
What's left? Yeah, I mean, how much acreage is there? There was, it started out being forty, right, but I see the court took up a bunch.
No.
They've, they've got.
I think there's forty acres inside the.
Your hours.
They've, they've got plans over here. This is all going to be public, could be public offices. Somewhere down the road, I think the city, you know, they've outgrown their city hall too. When they built that, they had one engineer, they had Marty Brows. They, I mean, they're they're busting at the seams too, so, but I can't speak for the city, but.
They got a lot of expansion room down there then?
Yeah, they do. Yeah.
Well, so that, that's one thing that we need to take into consideration too, is that if we add more FTEs, which many of you have asked for more employees, and we've said no, but at some point, we may need more positions and so that's going to require more space. And, you know, if you build a building, you better build it twenty-five percent bigger than what you need because you're going to eventually fill it up.
Don't the Missouri Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, either last week or this week, going to review a national register nomination to place MSP on the national register?
Yeah, Tony Prow called me last night at nine-thirty and it was going to be presented tomo- tomorrow in Joplin. They're not going to, yeah, they're, they're they didn't realize that the county, we needed to sign off on that too.
So at that point, and the advisory council approves, approves it, and approves sending it to Washington DC for consideration. And then it gets, and then the next step would be that it be listed on the national register. That would make that site more appealing and more attractive for redevelopment in the private sector and the public sector. So.
So we should get behind that?
It's, well, it's, it's something to keep in mind because that someday development is going to occur there because market's going to.
Well, they didn't realize that the county, that we are a partner in that, so that we're, we're going to have to make, we're going to have to, to approve to sign a.
We're not going to leave, the Supreme Court isn't going to be alone there forever. That place is going to break open sometime.
Yeah.
And, and having national register status will help speed that process up.
Well, I know Bob Holden says that's just, he, he said that's, that's just a diamond, just sitting there and, and, you know, it's just being ignored.
And if the state, the city and the county are working together to work with it and then the private sector taking an interest, you, you bring, you know, they're getting over twenty thousand people a year that are just visiting the place. And if you, if you have that much attention of people coming from all over the country to, to see the prison, and it is, it's in excess of twenty thousand visitors a year. Well, that doesn't go unnoticed in the private sector either. For development to cash in on that stuff. So it's, it's not, it's not doable today, but we're still talking about this. You know, the revenue may present itself to be a better option, but right now, it's not, it's not an option today, in my opinion. Only because it's not, well, it's not ready, but that will change.
Well, we wanted to keep this about an hour. And our, our hour is up. We still haven't, yeah.
What are we doing about the windows and stuff in this building, if anything? Because some, some offices do need to be painted and?
Is it just individual stuff? I mean, is it like an office or is it a large amount or?
Well, for instance, for my office, I'd like to see, get the, the whole office actually needs to be repainted and then it needs to be carpeted. And I agree with you all, we were at the point where there's no point in painting it until the windows are fixed because some, some are leaking. And I don't know if, look, I don't know what it takes to fix the windows. Do they need replacing or just need to be?
Greg knows better. I know we've been working on bids on the windows at the courthouse and there's ninety-nine windows over there, I know that. But, like, WaveCo looked at these windows and they said.
Yeah, they, WaveCo these themselves, the frames, basically you have to start at the top, tear all the window sections down and then rebuild. So it's not going to be an easy process from what I'm understanding from them.
Do they, do they need to be replaced or is it?
Yeah, the way they were designed is, that is on it.
That's why we're not painting anything right now. Is it going to make any sense to paint it?
Well, I understand, but is there any plan to fix the windows? I mean, you can't, something needs to be done one way or the other.
We've got a half a million dollars laying around? Yeah, that's, the intention is to fix them at some point. It's still trying to.
Or aren't, aren't we bidding the windows over here or did we already do that?
We have not bid yet. For the same, we've got another bid from another company which came in, which I gave you all, which was a little bit less than the original bid. If you like, we can get that together and get it out for bids as possible and see where the numbers come in.
But that, you're talking about the courthouse?
The courthouse and this building.
I think we ought to bid it just, but I think we ought to phase it too.
Yeah.
So that, you know, we could do it all or we could do a portion of it.
Well, that's what WaveCo's was, to do it in stages.
Yeah, but we have to bid it. I mean, that was just a budget number. I guarantee his number will be a lot better when he bids it.
Are the windows themselves leaking or the frames or what's leaking over the market on this bill?
The design.
The design of the windows?
I think it was a, they put the wrong windows in, didn't they? Something?
Over there, they put them backwards and up forward. The seals are all worn out too. This building, seals wore out. The throw breaks are bad. Windows built are bad. The curvations you would put in. Good luck, you guys.
You know, trailers are looking better all the time. You know, that works for schools. Just, just trailers.
They have a couple leaking windows.
So we do have some receivership money that we can use for some of those windows and, you know, ideally, we'd like to do the ones that are the worst, you know, get them fixed right away, especially over here since we've spent so much money on the courthouse already, but you know, if we've got some that are really bad over here, I think we could replace those. If you've got some that are leaking, please let us know and you know, we could just replace a few. I mean, although the goal would be to replace them all, so. Okay, I moved, moved to adjourn till four-thirty.
Stand in recess?
Yeah.
All right, second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you all.
Gentlemen, ladies.
What do we want to do on the windows then?
I'd like, I'd like to bid it.